So with everybody in tow, I would like to call the meeting to order, document the time is 6:35. And if you would stand, please, and join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands by the nation, under God, in his rule, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Tori, would you get us started?
Alright, everybody, we're gonna do a little mindfulness, be just ready for our board meeting. Take a high seat, your feet on the ground, and take a deep breath in. And breathe out. And breathe in. And out. And the next deep breath in, raise your shoulders all the way to your ears. And then drop them down with the out breath, see if you can find space between your ears and your shoulders. Breathe in. Out. Notice if you can feel sensations on the inside of your body, vibrations left over from the busy day. Breathe into your day's experience. And breathe out, let it all go. And breathe in to arriving here. Governing for the highest good of Winhueski. And on your exhale, next exhale. We can open our eyes and begin to work together as one.
Thank you. Alright, agenda review and/or revisions ahead, we hadn't talked, nothing this evening?
Nothing, sir.
Great, great. Okay, right directly then to the focus on learning, Sean, do you wanna kick it off?
Yes, well, I would like to invite Lan to the, to the stage. And Lan, our Vietnamese cultural liaison, is going to be kicking off the series that you heard about last month from Kirsten Colgard, our director of curriculum EOL, where each one of our liaisons will be giving a cultural presentation and sharing with us both some of the wonderful things about their culture and some of the challenges for their specific cultural group as they start to integrate into Winhueski and Vermont and the United States. Thanks Lan.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for giving me this opportunity to present the culture of Vietnam. And also talk about the difference of the two cultures, Americans and Vietnamese. And also about the difference between Americans and Vietnamese school system. And lastly, that I will go over the challenge that the parents and the student face in here in school system. Because it's more for school, so my focus is more in school and especially in our school district here. Okay, so. If I use this forward, is this what? Okay, there we go. You know that if you look at the world map and especially toward Asian continent, South Asia continent, you will find Vietnam country looks like level S by the coast of China Sea. So Vietnam is here and up north is border with China. So the Chinese people had came to Vietnam and colonized our country for thousand years. So we, Vietnamese adopted their culture, especially their writing system. So in the Chinese culture that we most influenced by and then shaped our society is the hierarchy call, okay? And so that system is from Chinese, Confucianism, okay? And what it did for our Vietnamese people and our society that taught us how to be respectful to the adults and the elderly. And also that we follow rules, law and direction wholeheartedly. And so you can see that when Vietnamese newcomers, it's the kids, come to Winhueski district, they are very well behaved, yes. And then they follow teacher direction and we don't have any behavior issue with the Vietnamese newcomers because thanks to the system, okay? But this has drawbacks. So because we really respect the authority, the hierarchy, so we tend to be very intimidate. And we feel so uneasy to come to people in school district, like to come to see teacher or administrator or the authority, especially like the our office resource, Jason, how do you call this?
FRO.
FROs, yeah, okay. Oh, you know, that figure, the policeman, ah, is a scary figure in Vietnam. So that's why when Vietnamese family has problem or any concern, any complaint, they hardly come to school and express what they feel and what they need, okay? So that's one of the religion that we got affected and shape our society. About personality of Vietnamese, you can find them love to smile. We can smile anytime, we can smile at everything. And this is a misleading expression to tell you that because they can smile when they agree with you or disagree with you or they feel embarrassed or anything, anything, in any situation, circumstances, they can smile. And so you can get confused, oh, I don't know she agree with me or he agree with me or what is it here? Okay, so you should go along and then ask them, check with them for sure what that smile mean to you, okay? Alright, and then another confusing is they tend to not say yes to a negative question. So I would like to give you a good example. Like I saw a student and I asked him that he wants to play basketball after school on the early release day. And he said, no, we, my brother and I don't want to do that. And then later on, I saw his older brother, so I double check with him. And actually, we, I asked him in Vietnamese, but translated in English just mean, don't you want to play basketball after school on release, early release day? He said, yes. So I go, in my head, I thought, oh, that mean he want to play basketball. But then, but then I, I think for a second, I said, no, 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 in Vietnamese language, you say yes, that means you agree with the question. You don't say, yes, I do, or you say, no, I don't like in America, um, I'm sorry, English language. So, so that can be confusing. So if you see a new Vietnamese, a newcomer, you know Vietnamese, and you ask that negative question, make sure that you understand they say they really want to do it or they don't want to do it because they can say yes to you, okay? And lastly, that I would like to mention about the indifference, the difference is the Vietnamese people tend not to be informative. So in school, it's, sometimes it's difficult for me. If they change their address, they don't tell me, they inform the school. They have a new phone number, they don't. So, so that's the thing, they, they think that, oh, it's my, my, my private life. I don't have to disclose to anybody, but they don't know that the information is very important to school, okay? Alright, so. Next thing that I would like to talk to you about the differences between US and the Vietnamese school system, okay? You can see that I had two column there and with the arrows with double S because I want you to go, go back, go together and see the difference. I compared the two differences for you to see. So. In Vietnam, we teach the kids with the rote memorization. They had to memorize things, they had to memorize how to do math. This is the way for you to do it and you memorize it and then you can do it. So I remember when I was in middle, even in elementary school and middle school, I had to memorize a text. And, and next day, a teacher called me up and I had to come in front of the class and recite that text. And I had to do it fluently. If I did not, you know, he can, or my teacher can give me a zero, okay? So it's forty, fifty years ago. And I checked with a newcomer who came to our school district for about less than two months. And I asked him, do you still have to recite the text that the, that the teacher want you to memorize? And he said, yes, I still have to do it. So I guess they still use that rote memorization and apply in school. But for here, no, we teach the kid to understand, you have to understand how to do this. Teacher don't using memories to then work out the problem and thing like that. So that's the difference. For exam, we have national exam. Here we have standard test. So I don't, I really don't really go over a lot about the US school system because you're all familiar with that. I, I just wanted to see the difference and then I talk more about the Vietnamese school system. So what are national exam? It's just that exam that for students to, for, actually for school, to screen the students, to accept them into public school. You know, like when I was in fifth, yeah, I'm done with fifth grade. Then I have to take national exam in order to pass it and then I can go into public school. And I did, I failed, so I had to go to private school. And of course, when you go to private school, you have to pay, you have to pay for the tuition. And the same for high schoolers. When they finish 12th grade, they take national exam, they pass, they can go into national universities or colleges, okay? And so, so that, what kind of exam we have? We don't have any student collaboration at all. You don't see pair or group work in the classroom at all, okay? And the classroom is about the same size in ours, or a little bit bigger. But we have like two or three more number of student. We can have fifty to hundred per one's teacher, okay? And we don't have any staff support. It's just one teacher in that classroom. We don't have instructional assistant, we don't have parent to come and volunteer at all. So. So mostly the teacher have to work hard to teach the children. And, and in Vietnam, we, we create the kids, we use numbers from zero to ten. If it is in elementary school, upper, middle school or high school, we use from zero to hundred, okay? But here you, you see mostly proficiency expectation, like you go with number one, two, three is not, not meet, I mean entering a level or develop or achieve the fluency, right? So that's a difference. And as I mentioned before, that we, in school, parents don't come in school to, to volunteer and do anything. But they are very active in their student education, yeah. They willing to pay private school at, we call it grand school, okay? So to send the kids and to learn, to, to increase their skills. Especially when come to national exam, they have to be really good in order to pass the exam, okay? But here you see parents involve everywhere, PTO, come into classroom, you see, but not in Vietnam, okay? So that's why it's really hard. When Kirsten said, let's not know what we can, how we can encourage parents involvement in school. And I said, it's not easy, it's not easy to, to have parent to come to school, okay? Alright, so grand school, it's just a school that is more, a small private own than student come and learn extra skill. And like they can learn to be better at math, at reading, at writing, at anything, any subject that they learn in school, that they, they want to be a good student and then want to pass the national exam, especially high schoolers. So that's where they go after school. But here in America, in our school district, kids go to after school program, kids go to sport programs, yeah. But in Vietnam, we don't have sport team, we don't have sport program at all in our school. And then here you have special education, you have school board, you don't have anything like that. Especially special education. If your child has a severe learning disability or handicap, you gotta keep the kids at home. No public school, no private school accept them. So they never heard of special education there in Vietnam, okay? And I do want to mention about this, which I learned from the newcomers, she is left handed. But somehow she write with her right hand. And then when she draw a line or she does circle, she switch her pencil and then she, she draw it. And so I remember back then, we are not allowed to use right, left hand to, to, to write at all. Parents, teacher will, would not allow you. And if you are using the, the right, the left hand to write, they, they spank you. They use the ruler, they spank you. So, so I guess that's to the, the practice that the parents and the, the teacher wants to keep that. Alright, so next, challenging for student and families, okay? For student, I think, I think to find their own identity is not easy. To say that because they, they, they have Vietnamese culture at home. And then when they go to school, they have the American's culture in school and mostly in society. So, so they have to find their own identity. And sometime you have, kids can balance it, okay? And then, you know, but sometime you have kid very extreme, very Americanized. And so for kids who are very Americanized, the, the family, the parents really have frustration because they have a lot of expectation. From the culture, they, the parents have, had been raised Vietnamese way in Vietnam. And when they come here, it's different way, right? So, so, so they, they, they expect what, they expect from their children from what their parents expect from them, okay? And they don't, I, they, they don't see that, so they get very frustrated, okay? Because of the, the Vietnamese culture, it's always Vietnamese, so. So with Vietnamese, it's really thing for family. And you do for your family, but if you just think for yourself only, and that's not what the parents expect. It's not what Vietnamese culture expect from you, okay? Alright, so, so parents, some of, of the parents who came to the state, you can find people have no literacy skills. So when they, they learn English, it's really difficult for them to learn English. So the acquisition is very hard and they, they don't learn much of English. So that's the language barrier that they have. So they, they, they don't have good connection with school. And also, that also is the, the, the mindfulness, the, for the family because the, the power switch, right? Yeah, when kids have more English and the parent don't, and then the, the power shift. And that, that's also cause frustration to the, the parents too, okay? And for that reason, the parent don't understand school system, they cannot support the, the children at all, okay? And on top of that, they have long working hours, they, they do multiple jobs. And so what happened to the children? If they old enough, they can stay home by themselves. Or if they are young, then they mostly, they, they stay with grandparents. But if they don't have support from grandparents, then of course they send the kids to daycare or to friends or neighbors, okay? And, and so when I, I'm talking about receive no appropriate discipline or no knowledge of, of proper discipline, I don't mean in general at all. I just want to point it out for family that is uneducated, you know? And it's hard for them to be influenced by the American society or, or the English language. Then they really have no way how to discipline the kids because we have talked about this, that newcomer come before they, they come to America, to the US, that they are told you cannot give corporal punishment to your kids to discipline them. So, you know, my parents use that harsh, although they don't hit me or, you know, make me enjoy anything. But that's the way my parents raised me up. So when they come here, the hands are tied, so they don't know how to deal with the kids. And so, so this is the thing that I would love to see that for parents like that, they would receive some training from school or from, or from some other agency, you know? So they don't go overboard and, and then later on have to deal with UCF and thing like that, you know? Yeah, okay, the, the one thing that the challenge of the students, okay? In their family relationship, okay? Of course, you can have parents are not getting on divorce, okay? And then the children can, yeah, emotionally they have to deal with that. But in our Vietnamese community, we have divorce, say, go back to Vietnam and then get married to the native Vietnamese there. And then they bring the spouses over, okay? And you should imagine the kids, especially teenager, trying to find their own identity, okay? Get used to, had to hand, had to handle the, you know, the problem at home between their, his biological parents. And now new members to come to their family. And he or she totally doesn't, don't, yeah, doesn't speak English. And so now that, not even with, with parents, that, that now that they tend to speak more English. And if the parent don't, are not fluent in English, they have that barrier. And now they have to deal with another family member who totally very different that who can speak English and who can understand the, the, the American culture. So that's the thing that I think is very, very hard, very challenging for, for Vietnamese teenager. Even younger kids have to deal with that. And to think about it, they, when their mom, their parents remarried, they had to deal with the step siblings. And now they have to deal with half, we call half siblings, who, who, who don't know how to speak English with them and then no communication. So I think that's, that's, that's what I see right now in, 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 in some, some, not, not, not many, not families. So I, I don't know, we have any student in our school, but I expect we could have one, a family eventually run into that situation, okay? Alright, so that wrap up for the challenges that family and student face here, especially in our school district. I just thought that, I just want to present to you some suggestion that had to make parents and students feel welcome here in our school district. I know that the EOL teacher will do the welcome video for the newcomers' parents. But I also think that, why don't we form a welcome committee represented by the students? Because in one of new class, a new, new academic class, class, yeah, we have a middle schooler and his first day, he cry, cry, cry in the classroom. And the teacher put him next to his peer who can speak his language. And after that, he feel better. So I thought that to think, when teacher come to the new school, you don't know any English, but you get to meet a student about your age, can speaks just all language and take you around school, talk with you, and I think it's very reassuring. And I think that will make the, the student less intimidated, yeah. So I thought that, and then I just want to present that. And, and, and I think that teacher can learn how to say hello and thank you in popular foreign languages, in especially the biggest community in our school. Like they can learn how to say that in Arabic, Vietnamese, Somali, you know, French, okay? So, so I think, I think that at the parent conference, it's really nice. I think it's, it's parent feel great. And when the teacher can say hello or thank you with them, you know? So, so, so I don't know, but, but some of the newcomers, when they see new kids come, especially we just have a newcomer come to our school. And they come to me and say, how do you say hi in Vietnam? Miss, and then I taught them and they, they use that, to use that to the newcomers. So I think that So I think that's really good, you know, make the kids more, feel more welcome, okay? So I think I wrap up my, my presentation right here. And if you have any question, go right ahead and ask, please.
My first question is, how do you say hello and thank you in Vietnamese?
In Vietnamese?
Yes.
Uh, you just said cha.
Cha.
Cha, yes.
For hello.
C-H-A-O, that's mean cha, okay? Um, that, that mean hello in, in, in English. And then for thank you, you say cam ơ. Cam ơ. C-A-M, and then another word is ôn. But actually, Vietnamese language has that accent mark. So if you put that accent mark on the, it will change the pronunciation. But I just thought I give you, if you have visual, you can see the spelling and it's help you pronounce it better. But it's dao and cam ơ.
Cam ơ?
Cam ơ, yeah.
Cam ơ for, for your presentation and really, um...
For taking the time to teach us about the, um, um, the challenges, but also the rewarding parts about, um, of what our students have to handle here in the, in the school district and stuff. I think one of the hard, and I, I would like to hear your opinion on this. One of the harder challenge is, is making our younger students coming from different countries actually be prideful of the culture that they're from. Um, I think one of the things that I, I, I don't, you know, I try not to have, I want to see them be part of, of our new culture, but not necessarily assimilate where they lose their identity. Are there suggestions on the school district that we can do, that can help students be prideful about the place that they're from, you know?
Yeah. You know, because, this is the thing that I was thinking and I want to express my feeling about this, Sean, since you sent out a, an email about celebrating, especially this time of the year. And I think, I don't know, I, I understand it, but I think we, we are so diverse. And, and you know, to represent a country is, we, we focus more in, 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 in culture. And the culture stands out is more like holiday, yes, more like holidays. So every culture have different holidays. And, and that, that, that make it diverse and make it different from any other culture. And, but unfortunately, we can sadly celebrate that culture in school through holidays, you know? Yes, so, so, so if we could, we could present it to the school, you know? Yeah, because for, for us, the main important thing, like I have a Vietnamese language school and what we did in school was art, we, we're still doing that. Kids come to that Vietnamese language school. They learn to read and write Vietnamese, but also they learn about their culture. And, and, and most of them just love to, to, to prepare for the Chinese New Years. We call te, T-E, T-E-T, Lunar New Year. And, and they, they, they really into it because they know that this is my culture. And, and, and I don't want to lose that. So, so, so they all work, they do the traditional dance, they learn how to do a dragon dance, you know? And, and for us, for our, in that school, I think that's the main thing, that, that we, 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 we push for it and we want to encourage kids to be involved. So, so what I'm thinking is, you know, you, you are so, if the kids want to be prideful about their culture, that's what I, I would do, you know? Yeah, yeah, but...
I would encourage our school district to think about the, at least Lunar New Year.
And also, I was thinking that because this, this also in the, the, the school curriculum too. Because also kids learn about the country in, around the world, you know? And we can, we can have a day of Vietnamese day. You know, we don't, we don't come, bring food, anything, we don't. And so we, 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 if anything that is not really allowable, then, then we can have a Vietnamese day and then we can do something about that day. So then, you know, the kids can feel, oh, I'm Vietnamese too.
Is this also a way for us to, and I apologize for all the questions.
That's great.
Is this also a way for us to also reach out to the parents so that they feel less of that authoritiveness of our superintendent and our principal? I, I actually remember a parent that I actually sent to Sean one time, of Asian descent, not necessarily Vietnamese. And she said to me, like, you know, it was very hard for her to talk to it because you're right, even in the Chinese culture, which is very heavily Confucius, you know, there's this notion of fear of the authority. And, and, and so I know that we're also, you know, pride of the, of the students, but the whole point is also to bring the parents out so that they can help feel like they can take ownership of part of the school. And I'm wondering if we can do events that can kind of draw them in and let them lead. And, and it's something that as a school board, we should try to reach out to those communities. And if you have suggestions on how we can bridge that gap, please don't hesitate to tell us.
We are working very closely to question, if you don't mind to, to, to bring up anything or any ideas with her at all. And she's pretty good at, at executive those ideas.
And I do co-advice the Asian Student Union at the University of Vermont. And I know they're holding a Lunar New Year festival. So if there's anything that, you know, we can invite the students to be participating and coming to that event, I'll be happy to invite them all and make sure that they come to the UVM event Lunar New Year, as a small step.
In the past, we have worked with some agency, like the first night, they asked us to go, to do the lion dance. But unfortunately, that night, the weather was really warm and it's rain. So then, oh my God, as we got, the lion has ruled. My husband had to, to fix it up, but, you know? So, and, and some of, of the school, back then, like twenty years ago, yeah, Lauren Barnes and Exa Weller asked us to come over and do the, the traditional dance and the lion dance, you know? Yeah, just to come and represent your, your culture, a different school district, yeah. But we haven't done that for a long, long time, yeah. And here we, I remember that I had, my kids came too. And then we, we, um, the cafeteria, the Abbey Group did a Vietnamese lunch to celebrate Lunar New Year. And then we have our kids came. And yeah, we, we had the, the traditional dance and the lion dance here too. But since then, nobody asked us to continue doing that, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Cam, 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 cam ơ.
Yeah, when I say you're welcome, I said cam ơ. Okay, thank you everybody and good night.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So moving on, public comments. We have guests who would like to spend a minute.
Leo? Thank you. And I really do want to just spend a minute. But I want to take a very important minute. I think everybody's aware that I am retiring at the end of the year, the end of this school year, for clarity. And so I wanted, I wanted to come here, you're aware of this, but I wanted to come and speak to you in person because this has been a most amazing part of my life journey. I would say that the most proud moments that I have of being a part of the community have been here in Manuski. And to work with you, to have your trust, to have Sean's trust and Sean's support for the work that we're doing, to have a community that's working and committed to really making some amazing changes, has been an honor and a blessing for me. And I'm not saying goodbye because, like, I have a lot to do before I leave. So this is not a goodbye, this is a, a thank you day. And I wanted to do it in person, so, thank you. This is, what, what's happening here is truly amazing. And we have barely scratched the surface of really what needs to happen. It's incredibly challenging work, very difficult, and we're doing it. And we're doing it together. So, and, and like this was an example, the presentation by Lan and what's happening with our EOL services and how that's really informing and, and influencing our whole school, that's just a part of this journey too. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Cam ơ.
How'd they do? Not bad?
Absolutely can't let you off the hook, David. I'm going to say thank you.
There, there are things that come along in Vietnamese. Uh, cam ơ. Okay. Cam ơ. Things happen as you go through, through time. Your arrival here put a peace in that office that was desperately needed to bond us together and move us forward. And you did a fantastic job of that, bringing people together. I'd like to ask you, and if, if it's not an answer you can give us now, I can fully appreciate that, but if you can think about it and let us know. People come along for a reason. Sometimes it's a perfect timing and a perfect reason. And I think that's what yours was. As you move on, you're leaving a very different, you're leaving a very different environment than you took on. You, it, it's a cohesive group. I believe now though, that the hard work is still ahead of us. I think you, you kind of alluded to that. It's not by any means done. What do we look for in a follow-on principle from your eyes and your perspective? What would we be looking for, what would Sean be looking for to take that next step that we need?
Um, here's what I will say. Like I have the utmost faith in Sean because I think Sean sees things from a perspective that is really critical. I'm immersed in the work and I know the work from the skill sets that I bring, both what's working and what's not. So I'm intentionally not going into that territory. Because, because I, what, what I know is that the people on that committee know the work that has to be done. They know, they know me for the years that they've spent with me. They know what we've accomplished, they know who we have in place, they know the work ahead. And I would absolutely trust that they're going to know who is the person that's going to best fit what we need.
Perfect answer.
I don't know if that's a perfect answer, but that's, but that's an honest answer. I like...
It hit, it hit what it...
Okay, alright.
Good.
Can I say?
Yes.
I appreciate it and I'll, I'm sure I'll see you again. I, I'll make it my mission to attend one more board meeting.
For old times' sake.
For old times' sake, yeah.
For real old times' sake.
Alright. Okay, any other public comments? Moving into consent agenda at this point, any, I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda? And any comments? I had a couple here. So, in, in the minutes from, from the last meeting on, in section seven, governance processes, under B, I don't know that we captured exactly looking at the, looking at the minutes after the fact that we, we wanted to make sure that we brought the non-conformance back into compliance. And we decided to, to get, see if Val Gardner would join us for a training session. So that, that kind of, it left it open-ended with what was, what was in there. So if we can add, board to seek education on bringing this back into compliance, I would, that, that kind of touches more on the discussion rather than leaving it open. And then the other one that I had is down in, let me finish. Taking notes to help later. Down in section eleven. Should we have, at least in a minute, said we moved into executive session for review of negotiations? The reason for the executive session for...
It does say that, from what I see.
To discuss a negotiations.
Discuss a negoti...
Ah, okay.
It should say labor negotiations because that's the way it was on the agenda.
Yeah, no, no, I, I missed that completely, read too quickly. Okay, yep, that's all I had. Alright, so with that one correction, probably ought to rescind the previous motion and have the motion be that we would accept the consent agenda with that addition to it. Just that one clarification. I don't know if there are any special, we're just going to take back the first one?
Yeah.
Okay. So I would accept a motion to accept the consent agenda with the adjustment noted in section seven B for compliance. We have to move again because I cut the first one out. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? So now into the executive limitations, financial planning and the budget and timetable.
Yep, this was just a, in six A in your, in your packet, it just lays out the process, very similar to the way that we've done it the past five years or so. You'll note that there's a strike through from last week's meeting as we did not meet. And I think that the, the rest of the schedule will hopefully stay the way that it is described. And then that final step is just so you understand kind of the timelines that we, we need to meet in terms of getting the annual report and getting the warning, prepared to, to meet the legislative requirements for doing those things.
And then capital project update?
Yeah, so I'm just going to give you a verbal kind of update on the community engagement. To date, I have met with about twenty-five different folks outside of the, who not, who are not students or staff. They are parents, city councilors, mayor, community members, and have gone over the, in a more concise form, the, the report that you all saw in October on the capital project, showing them the two options and the compelling reasons why we need those things. And asking them along the way, what, what do you think is the community's readiness for this type of a project? How would you engage the community when we go out more broadly? And are there other people that you know of that you think would be key for me to meet? So I've gotten a lot of that information. Some of the key takeaways so far from those meetings have been generally very, very supportive of improving the school. There is some, some of the, some of the concerns were a little bit of sticker shock on the, on the costs right now as, as presented in the two options. Some concerned about bond fatigue across the, the city. There was real support for some specific parts of the design, like improving the PAC, the cafeteria, additional gym space, preschool expansion and the entry expansion. the cafeteria, additional gym space, preschool expansion and the entry expansion. There was, I would say, yeah, I would call it broad concern about, you know, do we really need another full-sized gymnasium? There were some concerns about decreased parking and green space around the whole campus if we were to expand. And there were some questions from a few people about whether or not there was a discussion about integrating green technologies into the design. So, those are kind of some of the broader themes that I've heard so far.
Good some feedback.
Yeah, some really good feedback. It's been really valuable to hear from folks. And they have some great ideas too about how to engage the community at different events, you know, good pointers on kind of days of the week, times of the day, places, you know, not just in the school. So, that's been great and we are kind of funneling that information back into the capital project committee who met yesterday. Some other things that have happened. We had Image here yesterday and today and they were doing interviews and doing B-roll around the building. And we've contracted them, as I told you, to do the promotional materials, including some videos. So they're working on that. And then the, the committee yesterday worked on developing the tours. So they actually spent an hour or two yesterday walking around the building and developing the flow of where you would take people, both from a, a short tour, which would be kind of maybe at halftime of a basketball game or in between the JV and the varsity, and then the longer tour that maybe we would do during full-on community forums on the weekends or in the evenings when that's all we're doing. So all of that work is being done and put together and the goal is to, to have all of that stuff and ready to go by the middle of January.
A lot of work. Thank you. So, next, next steps there, continue to get that ready in the middle of January?
Yep, we, we started to kind of look at the calendar and strategize some dates for some of the, the tours. And we also have TruX Collins, part of their contract is to kind of make the big posters for us that we can put in different places at different times, you know, after school when parents are gathering to pick up kids, we can have them out at, at events in the evening like basketball games and so forth. Put them around in different sites in the, in the city. And the idea then is, as we've talked about before, is to, to do a pretty energetic approach to the community in January specifically. And then February, probably do less energetic but more promotional materials so we don't get confused with the budget during that time leading up to the March vote. And also, we may really learn some things that the committee and the board may wanna shift, some things either in, you know, the options, the design or something so that we could be nimble enough to do that and then come back after the vote in March and April and part of May and really come back with some revisions.
Alright.
It's a very thoughtful process. A lot of hard work, yeah.
Moving in then to the monitoring report. This one is communication and support to the board. So, any comments here? Again, very thorough. Thank you for the piece. One, one thing did strike me in here and that is under section five, under the evidence. We have, one of our monitoring reports is on our dealings with the superintendent and I'm wondering if the evidence in five, we use that as evidence for the board monitoring report on its own as, rather than maybe having you write up, you know, your, your piece that, that requires obviously that the superintendent writing it up, whether it be you or, you know, a successor, be very brutally honest in that particular piece, right? So, that keeps, keeps everybody on, on track with what this whole process is about. So, thought that might be a way to use that. Alright. Any other comments on this?
Lots of mine.
Yep. Alright, I'll, would accept a motion to accept a monitoring report on the communications and support to the board, policy two eight. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Then we move down into unity of control. This is the board monitoring report three one. And this was actually probably one of the shortest board monitoring reports there is.
I thought it wasn't loading for me when I was reading through.
But, yeah.
Is it like, that's it?
I was looking for page two as well, but.
Thanks for giving me that.
This is, this is probably one of the most important ones. That's why it's right at the top of our, of our list, so. Any discussion here on the conclusions of the evidence? And Tori, thank you for taking a look.
He was in good shape.
Through that.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure it keeps hitting the spot. So I appreciate that help. All those in favor? No, we don't have a motion yet. So I would accept a motion to accept board monitoring policy three dot one, unity of control.
Should move.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? Okay, then, let's see, student report to the board, or down to you? Welcome back, by the way.
So on Friday, Bernie Sanders is gonna come and.
What?
And teachers and students have been preparing for his arrival by picking who's gonna guide him around our school. And the teachers are asking the students to write questions so that he can answer them for us. So that's on Friday. Last week.
Is that just for high school or is that like a school-wide?
I think it's just high school. Yeah. So last week, the scholars bowl team went to the FAT tournament at Essex High School and we did great.
Yay!
We lost all our, we lost our matches. No, actually we won one. One team won one.
Was it scholars, what was it?
Scholars Bowl.
Okay, scholars.
Yes. Okay. Um, so my piece, since I'm not really at the high school anymore, I'm doing early college at CCV. So, my piece I was gonna talk about how students are making that transition right now since it is finals week and a lot of us have like exams this week and I got two tomorrow. So, excited for that. Not really, but nervous. But, um, what I wanted to touch upon on the early college piece was that, on how it's going right now for us and because of Heidi and because of our guidance counselor, a lot of us have been encouraged as juniors and some juniors right now actually are doing their senior project early so they can grab onto the early, the early college opportunity. How it's going right now is, I've talked to a lot of the other students who are also in it. There are five of us right now. It's going pretty well. I think the thing that a lot of us have said is that the easiest, not the easiest thing, but the thing that we found really shocking to us was that our speeches are actually very good compared to the other students. Like our speech grades are always like, not like perfect at all or something like that, but they're better than what we expect. And then when we look at other students' speeches, we're like, oh yeah, this is something our teacher wouldn't have approved at Winuski High School because of the Jan Po and the Jun Po expositions. So that was something interesting to hear. But then we, a lot of us collectively agreed that exams, like the ones we have to prepare for, for like this week finals, were harder to take on because there isn't much, a lot of tests that are taken here. Like a lot of us focus on Jan Po, Jun Po and projects for expositions in the high school and middle school level, that it's a little harder for us to adjust to taking tests and studying because it's a lot, there aren't many skills that we learned in, throughout our years here that we can just transition over there because there aren't, just aren't a lot of tests for us to take. So that was an interesting thing to hear as we wrap up the semester. Yeah, this is my piece, yeah.
I thought you wanted to talk about that.
Yeah, that's all I have for tonight. Yeah.
You said there's five, five students doing the early college?
Um, yeah, I think that's the number, five or six, around there.
That's fine. Are you doing it full-time? That is, that is what you're doing?
Yeah, so it's, I'm taking my whole year there. I'm not taking any Winuski classes here and that's the case for a lot of students. And I know that there's a lot of students that are juniors right now doing the senior project so they can take on that opportunity next year as well. Yeah.
It's such a weird, you know, to hear you talk about like you don't feel like you're developing the skills to take a test. Essentially, in one sense. And I, and there's a part of me that's like troubled because I like, I want, I'm hoping that you're all doing well on the test. It's great that you're doing great on the communications and I, and I hope that gets fed back to our teachers. Like you also say that message to our teachers, to say the faith and, and why I struggle with the test thing because I think when you get to your junior and senior year in college, you're gonna go back to projects. And so I'm, I'm on this cusp of like poor attention because I don't want you all to think that life is a bunch of tests. I just had a whole conversation with my, a junior colleague in my office who told me that she's struggling in some ways, that she wasn't as prepared to handle the open-ended problems that I gave in, in terms of my project. And when I see, when I hear Jun Po and all those, that's the projects that you all do, right? And so how do we, and that's not a question for you to solve, but it's a question of us as educators, as people who lead this governance structure here.
Because the stress for the students is real. We heard that also in our conversations with students. And I feel like we're in this crux between businesses and everyone realizing we need people to be able to think open-endedly and to be able to take information and do something innovative with it that can help solve an organization's problem or move an organization forward. But you are having to take these tests.
Yeah.
Which is exactly what the students were worried about in this new proficiency-based system of project-based of being broader thinkers. There's still, there are still tests to be taken.
There are.
But I think that it's good to also recognize that it's in specific places in the college continuum. So that's an interesting puzzle to solve because it would be something like a small practice of giving, just giving some other practices for maybe the freshman sophomore years in college.
And it's weird because do you know that your junior and senior year in college is gonna be about projects or is your only, early entry college is only teaching you about tests?
I think that's the idea. Like we go into like taking SAT and stuff, we're like, okay, so all our, throughout our college, we're all gonna be doing tests and then now taking like classes at CCV where we have to do a final project. Like, oh, so this is a thing not just at Winuski, which a lot of students I feel like don't understand. So it comes as like a.
Is there somewhere where we can talk with CC? I mean, the hardest part about CCV is that their faculty aren't full-time.
Right, mostly adjunct.
They're all adjunct, which is, so it's not like they're, and you all wouldn't know this, this is me knowing higher ed and knowing that, and I'm struggling there, right? Like that is a big problem, like, um, you know, are there ways to talk to them about developing project base?
To get to the same.
Yeah, no, and that's not our problem to solve.
No, I'm just trying to think about what, what's the, what's the group or what's the venue, right, to, to push on that with some, some power?
Well, we, we, I mean, just the, the power, I mean, we've had the local colleges in here before. Maybe that is a chance to ask them back, to have that next round of discussion and ask them where, how, how we can help move the whole thing.
And it would be great to get some of our students and some of our teachers involved in that conversation.
Yeah.
So that they all could hear from each other instead of, sometimes we have only one or two of kind of the, the folks that are directly involved in that at the table.
Hint, sneak us a question to Bernie. Dead serious. Hint that that question is like the, the alignment of our high school to college is somewhere off. Here we are, a very innovative high school that is teaching, and you've already noticed, communication skills, so important. But now you're really getting upset at the school because you can't take a test? And I get it, no doubt that that's what your mind is and you gotta do take tests. I'm not trying to minimize the notion of not taking tests and all that. But it's weird because I also know that in the junior and senior year, it's about capstone projects. It's about like, if that sounds familiar, that sounds like Jun Po, that sounds like Expo, right? Like, you know.
So maybe the alignment is misaligned because so many different changes have been happening in this crux. I feel like that conversation that we had with the colleges, wasn't that like six years ago? Five or six?
Four, at least.
Yeah, it was a while ago. It would be nice to sort of wrap back around to see where they are in their process and where we are in our process. And because the interesting thing is, is the pressure around colleges with the, you know, there's that movement called the race to nowhere. Like who's creating these super-high expectations that are stressing students out that actually is obstructing their ability to be open-minded thinkers because they need the grades to do this? Like who's saying what they need? And it'd be, it'd be great to hear from the colleges again to refocus us and sort of, sort of where is the alignment and what can we expect from like two years, three years down the road? Where are we all headed with this?
Right, because their discussion at that time was more around, we are moving in this direction of proficiency-based learning, are you gonna be ready for the kids when they get there?
And they were saying, yes, we are.
And the answer was, we are gonna in fact be ready when we get there, when you get there.
We're already ready.
Now we're, now we're sending and the question really becomes, what are the dilemmas we're seeing between what we're sending, how they're receiving it and how are you guys feeling about it? So I would like to.
And I think adding in also not only test-taking is the look of the transcript and, and reporting on courses. Because the interesting thing is schools are at different places around how they report. This school has gone full bore with a proficiency-based report.
Is this your first year of the transcript?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, okay.
Yeah, so it'd be interesting to hear that too because I know that some parents are freaking out because they're still invested in the old system. Even American families are invested in the old system of A, B, like there's clarity.
Cultural, it's all the cultural presentation, the children. That's the system that.
Well, I think there's a lot of misconceptions to be worked out by all of those different stakeholders, you know? For example, I think some colleges who were kind of saying what you said, like, oh, we're ready. I think the misconception there is like if you send us kids who have all these, the ability to manage projects and integrate and everything, they're gonna be able to do everything else too. They, they think the specificity required to, you know, jam four hundred pages of text into two weeks and then be able to, you know, resuscitate it and apply it in a week later. You know, that, that might not, for every kid, that might not come out of that skillset that we're teaching. And the other misconception that, that we talked a little bit about when we met, which I thought was really fascinating, was during the conversation, Destiny kind of came to this realization of, I retain a lot more of the learning when I, when I was doing it the way I was doing it here versus what I'm doing now in early college. Like I understand it for a short period of time and I can achieve and it's, and I'm, and it's hard, but I don't always really remember that content, you know, a week or two later.
And I think that that speaks to some of the data that has been shown, like especially in that movie, Most Likely to Succeed, is one of these high prep schools, like high, you know, thinking going on. They finally tested their seniors three months after one of their sort of exit exams and they retained only like twenty to forty percent of the information.
And I've done study when I was at another institution where we looked at schools, charter schools, that were basically having students learn how to take tests and they learned how to take tests well, but once they got to college, they struggled because they couldn't deal with some of the movement towards the open-ended at the later end.
Right. Well, and I think like a lot of things we do in education, we throw the baby out with a bathwater.
Yes.
You know, and so for me, what, what I start thinking about is, it is a matter of finding the middle ground and being able to do all of those things. And then I also think we're expected to do a lot of things. So how do we make decisions at an organization about what we're really gonna do? Because oftentimes what happens in education is you try to do everything and you do a high percentage of it poorly.
You do it all, but not all well.
Right.
Right.
And you just, not enough time in the day or resources to do all of the things that we're talking about really, really well.
No, I know. But I really do appreciate the feedback that, that you're giving us about your experience at CCV and the early college program because that is what really will help us drive the dialogue and how we move as a school board. So please keep on providing that honest feedback and stuff.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
No, no, not at all. That definitely helps us figure out where to move. With you, your time being spent mostly off-campus, as we get toward the end of the year, are you gonna be able to have the time to help develop a new board member?
Yeah, I got Sophia to help me, we can do that. Yeah.
And I don't know, the process that was left behind, if that works, but, you know, we certainly appreciate the views and I think you guys are starting to. certainly appreciate the views and I think you guys are starting to come around to really not, you know, just the student report, but this kind of a discussion is really what we're looking to try to find somebody who can, you know, bring forward to us. So we appreciate it again. All right, uh, thank you. Appreciate that. So budget session.
Before we go, I know you wanna, I know you're dying to listen to the budget, but like you're more than welcome to leave now to go study for those two finals.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm looking at the time, like, oh, yeah, thank you.
This is not gonna help you to study from here forward.
But good luck. And remember, finals is just a time to show off your knowledge.
Okay. Almost not. Have a good night. Good night.
Thank you.
I gotta get organized up there. Do you wanna take a quick break or just go?
All right, our three mi- our three minutes is up into the budget.
We're gonna have a multiple choice test after this. Okay, go.
I suspect that's I suspect we are gonna have a multiple choice test.
We create five slides from memory. Yeah, so we're gonna take a look at the revised baseline. We've done some work on it in the last two weeks since we last met. Show you, uh, the variances, particularly in salaries and benefits. We do have somewhat of a tax preview, but it's very, very preliminary with many asterisks. And, um, I did also put something together to answer, uh, the question that came up a couple of weeks ago about enrollment and projections versus actuals. It's just a a couple of years since we've been working with N S D E C, but it'll give you a sense. So, um, the leadership team has gone back since November twenty-eighth and sharpened the pencil and reduced the budget to one point one percent, a little over a hundred ninety thousand dollars. The bulk of that coming in, uh, benefits as we've recently had open enrollment, we've been able to, uh, see elections and how those have, uh, changed.
Are those pretty well locked down once those elections are made for next year? I know I'm in a situation where if critical life changes happen, you can change the plan, but otherwise
So yeah, within thirty days, if you have a life event, you can change. And so we we've taken some assumptions, like we know some of our teachers are getting married next year, or some of them are expecting children. So we've made those assumptions into the budget, but we generally don't see a lot of fluctuation. It's only really when the staff itself changes.
And from a standpoint of the H R A, one of our big discussions last year on around the the benefits piece was how much do we we don't have to plan for a hundred percent of it because we're probably not gonna use a hundred percent. We planned almost perfectly last year, either by accident or pure dumb luck. Doesn't matter. It's all after the fact, looks perfect.
Well, I think we
Are we at that same level?
Those percentages from
From health equity?
And and so we're still planning at that same level?
I think, you know, seventy-five percent of our obligation is still a good number because we still are new to the program. We don't have a full year, a calendar year of data.
Right.
We were really lucky last year. We really, we were able to do that. Um,
Like I said, good, good planning or dumb luck, it sometimes it doesn't matter.
So I think, you know, if we, after we get a couple of years of data, we may be able to look at that percentage, you know, and look at our staff and our demographics, and that may need to change or fluctuate, but I feel comfortable with seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
I think it's a good number.
Same plan, okay.
I think it's a safe number for us to be at.
And you can see salaries didn't change too much. Uh, there was some fluctuation in the H R A, which is really related to the, uh, the benefit, uh, changes. Uh, we did do some reductions in professional development. We think that we'll be able to, um, through, hopefully through the bar grant, if we're able to get some of that money, um, be able to bridge that gap a little bit. But we did make some reductions, uh, primarily at the middle and high school around professional development. And, uh, then we took a, uh, a mild risk, but, uh, in special education tuition, we some things have changed since the service plan, so we feel pretty comfortable with with, uh, that amount, uh, right now. So those are the, uh, the changes, the reduction of a hundred ninety thousand that get us down to six point eight percent. Any questions on that? And I did send you guys out. I don't know if you saw the email. It had it all broken out by the object function and program, the kind of the revised baseline from from November twenty. Again, to give you a sense of of where this increase lies, ninety-eight percent of it is in salaries and benefits. So, um, you know, it it is, uh, I don't wanna be a broken record, but I will, you know, it we're not starting a whole bunch of new programs. You know, we've worked really hard to put things in place the last five years. And we're not asking for a lot of new stuff. Uh, it's, you know, it's it's in the most valuable part of our budget, which is people serving kids. And, um, you know, that goes up every year. So, uh, you can see on the object side there, it's abundantly clear, um, that that is, that's, uh, most of what we're asking for year here. It doesn't mean that, you know, there's there's a myth out there that, you know, you can't control that. We can't control it. But it's making really hard decisions at that point about when you're reducing positions and people, how are you impacting the organization when you do that and ultimately kids? And also, just to keep in mind, uh, we did also talk about a couple of possible investments. The, uh, special educators, one in preschool, one in the elementary are re- already in the service plan, so they are reflected. Those additions additions, and they are not included in that impact on the right-hand side. Our number one priority right now really would be the E L L teacher, and you s- you heard a little bit about that from Kirsten with the high, high ratios in the elementary, the lower elementary.
Clarify something for me. So the ones, the possible investments are already in the budget?
The only, so the under J F K, those two special educators, those are in the service plan, so they're included in the six point eight percent increase. Everything else is not. The guidance council, we've talked, uh, some about that and and, um, that's another high priority and we would go about it in the same way that we did with the, uh, elementary and ramping it on over two years with the halftime. And then the communications and development position that we've talked about, which could be a huge um, support if we're at least able to commit, uh, to the community that, given the capital project, that we would have a resource who would have quite a bit of time committed to trying to reduce that tax burden through fundraising and development. And, um, an ongoing concern and issue that we cope with on a daily basis is the substitute teacher problem. So those are the, uh, uh, kind of investments that we have, um, that you'll hear more about as we go and that we would like to try and fit some of those in along the way if we're able to. So in terms of, uh, um, next steps, we have a couple of, uh, numbers that we are really, really important and we don't have them yet. So the common level of appraisal, we expect that we would get that next week because that comes straight from the, from the state. And, uh, last year it came, um, that same week, so we're hoping to have that before next Wednesday's meeting, which will help. The equalized pupil count, which is a really important one and shi- can shift the tax impact pretty significantly defending, depending on what that number is. We're we're not hopeful that we're gonna have that next week based on what we're hearing out of the Agency of Education and, um, whether we'll have it, um, even in December. So we may be making a forecast on that and wrapping it in in that that first or second meeting in January to give you a clearer picture of tax impact. Revenue, we started to actually get some numbers in today. Um, so we, uh, Rebecca and I scrambled a little bit and I I wanna do a little bit of a teaser with the tax rate table. Please, please remember that this is
We're missing two key elements still, really important elements.
Are those assumed in to some level?
We assume them.
So I would expect that the C L A will go down again, if only a little. Hard to tell from last year? That pretty much where
I would think so too, but I really don't know, and I haven't gotten any indication out of the city.
And equalized pupil, you said, is kind of random. Well, not random, but it's
Yeah, 'cause it's a two or three-year average, I forgot.
Two-year rolling average.
We've only gone up, right? Over the past two to three years.
Yeah, we've only gone up the last couple of years. Yeah.
So we would expect that if nothing to go up, if not all constant, but not go down.
We also need to remember that some of our numbers going up are the F one sixty-six, um, students. And then we only get half credit for those needing, yeah, equalized people. So that's important to remember when we think about numbers.
So I wanna just kind of walk you through, you know, if you remember from the past, we kind of have a couple of different scenarios usually for you with different investments. These don't include any of those investments that we just talked about. But if you look at scenario number one, um, that is the budget at six point eight percent, seventeen point nine million. We have an estimated federal budget, that two point three six million that we're pretty comfortable with that estimate right now, which gives us a total, uh, between those two of twenty million, and then the offsetting revenues that we're pretty comfortable with as well that started coming in tonight, uh, five point two four eight million, and then our ed spending. Now, the C L A in purple there, I kept it flat. And you can't see the equalized pupil below there, but I kept that flat. So given all of those numbers, the estimated tax, uh, impact would be, uh, just over tw- two percent. So that's where we're at right now. Now, obviously, you can start to see how it changes with a drop in C L A in scenario two.
Is that the only change there? My equalized pupil is constant?
I'm not sure if I changed the equalized pupil there or not.
Seems like
I did. I dropped it to a thousand.
Okay. It seems like the C L A alone, that's a big jump.
Yep. So that's kind of the teaser. We we're set up. We got all the numbers. We can run them and flip the switches on the different things as we go. Um, and it's just really hard to say to you right now, like, boy, we should really be thinking about investments, or we should really be thinking about reductions, so we're doing both.
Okay. So I guess at this point, without this, without a C L A, actually, that one seemed a little more solid to to be getting. I mean, we we've been getting it pretty regularly.
I think I feel comfortable that we'll get that.
All that data comes from a source other than the schools themselves, right, rolled up?
What's happening with the equalized pupil is they had a new system this year, um, to gather the information. And when I was at a conference last week, there were still, I believe it said four schools that hadn't submitted and twelve schools that weren't certified yet. The statute does say that we are to get that number by December fifteenth, but we've been told that we won't get it.
So much for, okay.
And we've been asked not to ask.
Does it? Yeah, then you're slowing them down.
Right.
Um, so from a, uh, schedule standpoint and timing, i- is getting the C L A alone enough to get us back together next week?
I think it would be.
Twelve nineteen.
Because I think depending on what that C L A is, we're gonna be talking about investments or reductions. And I think that's, we need time to do that.
Okay, and then the equalized will be?
I don't suspect that we'll have that before we break for the holidays.
There's no way based on the data that we've given that we could infer that?
No, because it's all gonna be compiled, and then it's weighted and it's it's done on a state average. I may find out more information on Friday when we have our FASBO meeting.
But don't ask.
But I won't ask. Try to be compliant.
Okay, so I think the only thing I, if if we do get the C L A to lock down that piece, if next week we can get a couple of scenarios with equalized pupil, I again, I don't know that going down is necessarily or maybe around the ten eighteen, one up, one down.
Yeah.
Even if he, just just to get a a mental picture of where that might be and that that would help. I don't know if there's anything else without having all the data in place. I just wanna make sure we're ready so we don't have to because after next week, we're into January, right?
I think we're we're set up really well to be able to run with it once we get those numbers. We've we've done a lot of the work. It's just we're, our hands are tied.
Yep. All right, any other?
Worse this year. It's a lot worse this year.
All right.
So let me just show you this, uh, so you have, um, kind of dueling charts here on the left, K twelve, and then we add the preschoolers in, um, on the right-hand side, and I just, like I said, just did the N S D E C data, which is really kind of three full years of projection and actual. And, um, in going through and reading their analysis and looking at this, what's really clear to me is that federal immigration policy had a huge impact, and that's why you see you see it tighter when you include preschool, the differential. But when I go back and I look at the comparison grade to grade, where the nu- the number, the bulk of that delta is in the high school, which, if you look at, um, kind of immigration over the last five years, we have quite a few kids who come into high school each year. So when they lowered that, it's it really hit the eighteen nineteen school year for us with, you know, um, inauguration in seventeen, in, uh, January of seventeen, and then the policy really taking effect for the next year. So I I that's a huge, when you look at the births, the births are not changing significantly year to year.
This tells me that the data that we were looking at, at least planning on having that very gradual growth, is pretty close. The changes that were made in eighteen nineteen are way, way out of their assumption range. Right, that that's a radical departure from the base level of assumptions from, I'm assuming they're using from the past ten years or whatever.
Yeah.
So okay, well, I I guess I'm
Does that help? I know, I know you were asking more than that in terms of same students and stuff, but
There's that bump, but it'd be interesting to see how that plays out.
Yeah.
Because of the immigration policies.
Right.
And whether it goes back to their standard, tracking to their standard plan when
Yeah, well, and it also tells me when they were spot-on the first year and they're, you know, really tight band in the next year. I mean, it's only two years, but then to jump like that, it's, uh,
Not an impact.
There are other changes.
Many lives. Thank you.
Great. All right, so we're on for next week. We get the C L A. We're gonna, if we get the C L A, we'll have a couple of other equalized pupil pieces, and we'll have a little bit of an idea of where to go from there. Other revenue stuff that is any of huge importance that we need still?
So late this afternoon, we got some of the special ed revenue that we plugged in really quickly. Waiting to finish calculating or getting information to calculate the transportation revenue because we will start getting more transportation revenue because we are busing a little bit now, so we can
That's two years, three year?
Two years, so, but you know, we can kind of forecast some of that. The other numbers that are big is just, um, the state has to announce some numbers around, um, tech tuition and on the behalf of, so we're waiting for those, um, you know.
That has been stepping up or the number of kids we've sent in?
Right, so it's based on a s- a six semester rolling average, but we don't have the rate yet to use, so we made some assumptions, um, but that could change based on what the state says, so they're aware that everyone's waiting and
Okay. All right. Anything else from that? Thank you. That's, uh,
Thanks for the work.
Good turn. Community activities since last time? Anybody have anything?
Yeah.
Thank you, Rebecca. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rebecca. All right.
No, but, uh, it's my turn to write for the newsletter.
Oh, yes.
Does anybody have any suggestions? Obviously, the budget seems like a relatively straightforward topic, but anything else you want me to include?
Yeah, I actually wanted to put a piece in here to remind us to talk about that, to make sure we had one-line item for newsletter topics. What I'd really like to do though tonight is if we can look at two, two successive topics potentially, and that way, rather than having a topic tonight, writing it tomorrow for a deadline that was yesterday, because our meetings line up right with that deadline, I'd like to get this month square and whoever's writing next month have a topic in mind tonight. And then, and then next time when we get and then next time when we get to, yeah, right, then next time when we get together, we'll talk about the month out, so you have a month to do it rather than a day. All right, so, um,
So one of the things I, i- if you would consider is, so I normally do, um, the February newsletter is about the budget in my piece because we have everything done by then, you know, in order for her to get it ready. I wonder if the board could do the capital project in January, 'cause I, my
January, so I'm already
Okay, 'cause so I, if you saw what I wrote in December about, I was trying to, you know, really talk about the needs and the process and everything, and maybe the board's writing in January board's writing in January could be more of the next steps.
Isn't the one you're writing going to be in January?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, the one he's re, doing right now goes out in, in...
But are you, you're working on that already right now, it says?
I just random thoughts, I started jotting down.
Actually, we've got Matt for mid-December for January's newsletter, and then Tori for mid-January for February.
Yeah.
And then you were on for the mid-February for March.
I tell you what, if you have one for the capital project, I'm happy to just to like, switch places with you and write the...
This capital project though, coming in January or February?
I, I think January would be best, because we're going to start going out with community engagement at the end of January.
Which is this one here.
So it's this one?
Yeah.
Because it'll be out in the first week of January.
Probably Saturday Sunday, I should let you have it.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we control the newsletter, so if we need to...
Have a whole...
Yeah, I mean, she has, she is very organized around deadlines, which is really great and everything, but if I tell her it's okay, if it doesn't go out until January, you know, eighth, it's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, I, I've got like parts of it written, like draft form, so I think I can finish it off.
And then, Tori, actually I have some, I did some jotting down about the budget already, so if you want, I'll do February's.
Okay, and then I'll do March.
And you can have a free range in March, so...
Good.
The only thing I'll incorporate in my one is, I kind of want to just keep on pushing the cultural presentations to invite to the community, I, like, I've already started to talk to my students, but like, you all should just come down to Winuski and, um, is the schedule of the cultural presentation in last week's agenda?
It's on our annual agenda.
It's on the annual agenda, I don't think it's...
Is it by the different groups and stuff?
In the annual agenda it is.
Yeah.
Let me send, I'll send it out to everybody.
Yeah.
Because it does lay it out, it's coming next.
And that will be helpful, I just kind of, figure out how to get that out to probably front porch forum, like, here's another...
Games.
It will.
You know, come for the first half hour.
Miss the neighborhood.
And come learn about your community members, and, and how do we build a more welcoming...
Yeah.
I actually thought, like, our motivation last time with, um, Parents for Youth and Change, that they were going to be excited to come.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I have a dream that will help other people show up.
Yeah.
Okay, so Alex, you're going to...
Yeah.
Hit the capital project, then Matt?
I'll do budget.
Budget for mid-January.
But then on our next budget meeting, we can start talking about, like, on February's budget meeting, no?
Yours will be mid-February, it's for Marches, and Marches comes out before...
Right, right.
We go to the polls.
I can always do that one with my little farewell writing.
That's true.
That's a good idea.
How many years?
Would you want to do that?
Sure.
Do that.
That'll give you plenty of time to do that.
You're funny. I'll still do it the day before.
I, I understand that, but...
Nine years.
Wow, you definitely...
Wow.
Right on, that's awesome.
Come on, one more for ten.
No, right.
No, no, one more is thirteen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Can't do that, nope. It's time to pass the baton, my kids are all out.
That's awesome, congratulations, thank you.